Yep.
Recording.
And I. I will call for order. Meeting eighteen oh nine of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is now six thirty P M. We have a forum with four members present. And Jim is not present tonight. Do we have any added agenda items? Do we have any legal notice?
Not listed.
Okay. Item business is public participation. And again, for the public, this is only four items not listed on the agenda tonight. So is there something that is not on the agenda that somebody wants to raise with us? We'll start with people in the room. Anyone in the room who wants to raise something? Anybody joining us by Zoom who wants to raise something that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to approve minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting. Does anybody have any? Edits they want to see made or are we satisfied with minutes as drafted? Everybody is satisfied, in motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of meeting eighteen oh eight held on August tenth, twenty twenty one, as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved. Receipt of applications, we received an application. P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty five for recycled concrete products of Connecticut Inc. Thirty three of Austin County's Paul Road. It would be a special use permit for a volume reduction facility to reestablish conditions allowed under the expired permit. It's zone M one map fifty seven block forty eight, lot thirty eight. Um, we. Receiving it tonight, we're not taking it out for discussion.
Actually, if I did just jump in, I'm looking through my notes that I have from Ruth and and. Looks like she may have received another application at unit four Bastille Plaza. It's a special use permit for this is called designing kitchens. So this would be received if we have everything and we'll schedule it here, but that should be received.
Okay, so we have a second item. Under receipt of applications.
Uh, number two, application number twenty six.
Okay. Anything else under receipt of applications?
Sorry about that.
Do we have anything under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, or road acceptance?
You know.
And you do not have anything under continued public hearing. Okay. And our next item will be the new public hearing. It's P Z. Twenty one dash twenty four for a special use permit for seventeen Thompson Road. To allow outdoor live entertainment and outdoor alcohol consumption. It's map eighty two, block eighteen, lot eleven. It's an M one zone, the applicant is Lanote Wedding and Banquets. The owner is K T S Real Pea. We have the applicant here to present. Could you? Come forward and identify yourself and give us an overview of your application.
My name is Salas Karayani, so I own K T S Real Pea, property, La Note Restaurant, all another one explaining what he said. I was all that. And basically, we would continue the one we've been doing for the past fifteen years. We just decided to be with strictly weddings and language versus dining. So the license, we decided to go with a new legal license, the precise number. And basically, we never hire bands or. Headbands in the past, basically, the. The people that do the functions do that, I mean, I think we knew that we needed the license for that, so. We're here to just make it. Legal to help the entertainment. And the legal to be served in the ten ninety percent of the functions of doing these states is. Ask for outdoors, so. In order to survive. We need to use the outdoor facilities.
Questions from the commission?
Yeah, so these events are strictly all still going to be kind of private events, it's not.
It's all private events.
It's not open to the public.
No, it's private events, then anybody can learn them, sell them, and.
It's pretty much, you're gonna try to go throughout the seat throughout the year, or just seasonal?
Well, there are, don't just seasonal. You know, generally from mid April all the way through late October.
Weather permits.
Weather permits.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission?
Parking seems to be adequate.
Oh, plenty of parking right now. Wish I could fill it up.
Any other input or questions from the commission?
No other changes to your operation.
No, the same operation I've been doing for the last twenty years or so. It's just utilizing the outdoors a lot more. And we decided to stay with the weddings and banquets versus any dining, because dining is. Getting very. Very scarce right now. So it's.
Any security concerns?
Not necessarily, we haven't had any issues in the past twenty years, so.
All right. This is a public hearing, is there anybody from the public who's in the room who would like to speak to this application? Yes, please identify yourself.
Jim Row Richard, twenty seven plus, he's present. Sammy and I know each other from years, it's our relationship. Has assisted the community in many events, which is what he's saying, it's always been a free conversation.
Anyone else in the room who would like to speak to this application? Anybody on Zoom platform who's not physically in the room who would like to speak to this application? Right, hearing no other comments. It seems like we could close the public hearing if the commission is amenable.
I just jump in.
Yes.
Um, so I just want to confirm that we did send this out to departments for review. No one responded back with any concerns, the fire marshal has looked at it, he has no issues. He has, he provided documentation that shows that the fire marshal has already inspected the tent for all the requirements there. I just wanted, I think maybe it makes sense to just go through. While the hearing is open, you can find the applicant, the five suggested conditions, just to make sure that. He's aware and I can explain or answer any questions you guys might have at that point. As far as sort of.
Have you seen the memo from the town planner which I proposed conditions?
I don't believe I've seen it yet.
I agree, you can read it and look at it at the same time. Yeah.
So. So the proposed conditions for consideration prior to the issuance of any permits. Applicants or owners shall file a copy of certificate of approval on land, that's standard for all. Outdoor events shall take place within the existing outdoor tent area as depicted on the site plan. That's just to make it clear that, you know, these are not just happening anywhere on the property. We don't have a noise ordinance in East Windsor, so. Refer, I think this may come up at least for consideration, I, I looked in the Connecticut State Agency section as. Information regarding noise zone standards, they're much more. Loosely defined, but it creates a little bit of a, of a line, so that if there are issues, there's something that we can look at that's not subjective. I'm suggesting that no amplified music or live entertainment should occur after eleven P M. And that outdoor alcohol consumption shall be limited to the existing outdoor area as depicted on the site plan. So those are five things that's.
All right, so there's.
Basically, that's the conditions of when by there anyway, so we don't allow a lot of. Refer to be part of the. Or any alcohol going into the parking lot, matter of fact, a lot of times, I go outside in the parking lot myself and tell people that. Sometimes a lot of people try to bring their own. And we got in the parking lot and tried to keep that. You know, as much as we can, clean as possible. So we haven't had any incidents. And the music is basis, basically a weekend facility. So there's nothing else in the industrial park at that time. And most of the events are out by eleven. Anyway, so yeah, very rarely we have any events that go beyond eleven. So.
And this would allow acoustic events, if somebody had someone playing a guitar or something along those lines that was not amplified. In theory, it could go past eleven, but anything that's amplified, then entertain.
There are no concerts or anything of that sort of mostly, you know. Family events or weddings and stuff like that, it's not any. Huge equipment in there or anything.
Somebody that asked to be unmuted? Right. You did previously as a galaxy.
Oh, very interesting.
Oh, they just joined, they asked to enter, okay.
Yeah. And they're joining.
Gotcha.
Okay, um. We've reviewed the conditions for approval. Is there anybody in the room who wants to comment on the conditions? Anybody on the Zoom platform that would like to comment? Then I think at this point, we could close the public hearing. If that's acceptable for the commission.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for application P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty four, special use permit. Seventeen Thompson Road, La Note, for a special use permit to allow outdoor alcohol consumption and outdoor live entertainment.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Frank. The public hearing is closed. If commission is amenable, we could act to.
And have to put it to a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Okay, here's the meeting.
Um, if the, now that the hearing is closed, if. The commission is amenable, we could move forward with a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the application P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty four for a special use permit. At seventeen Thompson Road, La Note, special use permit to allow outdoor alcohol consumption and outdoor live entertainment. This approval is granted and subject to conformance with the application materials. And the following conditions and modifications listed one through five. Memo from Mike Demaro dated July twenty first, twenty twenty one.
We have a second to that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Frank, all those in, oh, just any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So it's been a process. Under old business. We have a review of proposed changes. Section four oh six, until we can see four oh six and four oh seven together. Four oh six is living area requirements and four oh seven is accessory apartments. These are proposed changes we've been discussing, required by. Recently adopted statute.
So. I went through and basically made modifications following our last discussion. To bring the existing language. That we have in compliance with the new legislation. Again, it's hard to show in print the track changes in a way that's clear, so I have. The clean version, and I think we tried to put the track changes, but it's kind of messy. So four oh six, which used to have the minimum sizes for dwellings in square feet, we've now revised to just indicate that. Nothing can be erected, which doesn't apply with applicable codes, and that's what some of the language in the legislation says. So there's a house, a housing code or health code or building code that says they have to do something a certain way. They have to meet that, even if it ultimately means they have to build something a certain size, so we're just pointing to that. Mission prefers we can remove it altogether, but. I have that there just to, just to.
It gets helpful for people to know there's other requirements.
I, I think that because we've had on the books for so long, a minimum size, keeping the section in place makes it clear when they're going forward. Oh, there's an event modification, it was effective, you know, August or September of twenty twenty one, so I think it's probably clearer, but. And then the accessory apartments, so we talked about some of this, and there are certain things that we can do. So I might modify this. To reflect that. So again, we're still requiring, you know, that they submit these certain things, it's not as a right, which means they still would need. A zoning permit, it doesn't mean that you just go ahead and do it, our office would still know. And one of the things that I'm still. Working on, but I'm suggesting here is if you look at I, it says that designing construction should be consistent with the primary code. So we know that that's a subjective term. But you last time wanted to have something in there which says, you know.
One is it?
Yeah, and I put should, right, we're encouraging it, but. And I, I also added. A line, G, no unit shall be rented for a period of less than ninety days. That's getting into the short term rental stuff to, to make it clear that the accessory apartment is intended for dwelling.
At an Airbnb, yeah.
Right, I don't know that it's necessarily a big problem, but the commission hasn't discussed short term rentals, and I don't want there to be this potential gap. Where someone could say, well, I have an accessory apartment and I just rent it out on a weekly basis, so I'm including that. The other thing that I added was F, an A D U shall not be located in a mobile home recreational vehicle travel trailer. Structure that previously operated as or was intended to be a motor vehicle or structure. The goal of this.
Is that duplicated in J?
Yes, it is. Sorry, this is, um. Yes, I'll remove that. Um, but we don't want these things to be permanently fixed and. You know, just to kind of put on your radar, because it does deal with this, I have had someone just been requiring. Very consistently about having a conversation about tiny houses and how that can work, because they. Family in East Windsor or something, so. I've explained where we are and that this regulation is not necessarily the same thing for a couple of reasons, so. That may be an informal discussion or something we can take up later, but I think that's got to be a separate section, I don't think we should, we can just kind of insert that. So the next step, if you, provided I remove the duplication. Would be, if you want, I can send this to CROG and subsequent to their receipt, we would schedule it for, I think, or you can continue to think about it, it's totally up to you.
Basically, what we're doing here is just taking our existing regulations and making them. I'll say comply with changes to the statute, so it's not like it's a. Big policy change, it's a. Technical correction, given what needs to be done.
Exactly. We've dialed back the restrictions and we've adjusted it so that it no longer requires a special use permit, it's done through the office, so the permitting requirement.
That's mandated by statute now, so it's not choice of the town. Decision of the general assembly.
Correct.
So does the commission feel the need to discuss this further, or do you think it's ready to go to CROG for review?
I think it's got everything in it that we discussed, yeah.
I feel comfortable with this.
Okay, so it sounds like you have consensus to move it forward to CROG for their comments next.
Okay, and you, you know, during the hearing, once we refer, we can always make something more restrictive. Once it's been referred, we can always ratchet the requirements up, we just can't make it less restrictive. So we still have some room, if you think of something, let me know, but I'll, I'll refer it out.
And the public will get to comment when it's. After CROG.
Yeah, so once, once I get the confirmation that they've received it, we can schedule a hearing thirty five days, so we're probably looking at. First meeting in October at the earliest, and that, so that'll be public hearing, which will be noticed if anybody speaks.
Next item we have, it looks like listed twice as a new public hearing and. New business, but we've already taken off. A special use permit for seventeen Thompson Road.
Yeah, I put that there, because I wasn't sure if you were going to deal with it during the hearing or not, so I wanted.
Okay.
You haven't had it, so.
So the next item under new business, we've been discussing the potential for a temporary moratorium on cannabis. Um, and the selectmen would like to discuss that with us, they've scheduled a meeting for September second. So I think so that we can get the inputs of the selectmen. We should postpone discussion till we have the benefit there, but. Is that acceptable to members of the commission?
Yes.
And also add in that I'm actually very fortunate to be going on a tour Thursday of a facility that basically similar that wants to come to East Windsor, so. I'll be able to have a little more insight and be able to.
I'll say it, the manufacturing or the.
The manufacturing and the retail, so it's both, yeah. So I'll be able to bring it back and maybe help with answering any questions of.
You're not going to bring any samples, are you?
Well, I wanted to take my own personal car, so I would be on my own personal time. But I think might be a.
Town trip.
You think they'll, they'll allow you to take photos?
I wanted to at least get one selfie in front of me. I need to update my Facebook page, right? I just want to include, so following the last meeting, the referral did go to CROG for the temporary moratorium, which just means we can schedule a hearing. But we have the thirty five days, so we have to still have some time, we just can't hold it any sooner than. The, the date listed, we can postpone it, you can not have it, you can open it. Or push it off, but.
At this point, we need to delay any decision on what we are going to do till we've had the benefit of the input from. The selectmen who've been studying this issue and may have found ways to address our concerns. So I would propose that we have a motion to. Postpone this discussion till future day, after. The selectmen's meeting.
Nine to.
Nine to, so it'll be the meeting after that, when we decide.
Yes, the fourteen of September.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we postpone the discussion on the moratorium. Of cannabis establishments until our next meeting of September fourteenth.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded by Frank.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Um. Under. Other business, do we have anything? Well, anything under correspondence other than the email we got from the first selectman inviting us to a meeting on September second at seventeen.
I just, I guess, because it would be correspondence technically, but it's, it's leaving this commission and going to the others, we did send out something to the last meeting, indications to all the. Ports and commissions identified for the second meeting in September, discussion on open space, so. We've heard back from a number of them, and we've. We know we'll have some in attendance, so just that, that correspondence has gone helpful.
Great.
What is that on? So following, because Ruth's been working on the P O C D implementation, and one of the things that they're trying to do is put together a more. Defined and sort of planned approach to open space, rather than do we want to feed, do we want this? So, so the goal was to have conservation, E D C, board of selectmen, this commission. It helped me, I'm sure I'm forgetting.
Yeah, it's six commissions, you've probably got, if all six of you are, it's going to be here five. And you probably got another six people who are coming in, it's, you know, people are not falling over.
To talk about, yeah, so strategic open space acquisitions, identifying, making sure that, you know, we think this parcel, but we think this. So that we have a more clear approach to how we acquire open space and target purchases.
I think, speaking, speaking as a staff person, it's a big problem. It's a big problem with us taking open space that now we inherit and now we have to maintain. The, the trees falling on property we can't even get to, so I may want, you may want to think about maybe inviting Lenny or. Or, or because we have a lot of issues.
I think it.
There's a lot that, yeah, there should be some input, I mean, maintenance wise, it's starting to be very costly to, for us to have all these little pockets of land. And now they have to be taken care of.
I thought, I think it went to implementation, but it's not how it might know.
We've heard that before, we've also heard. When there are subdivisions and there's an open space requirement. Debate on. Should there be open space right there at the subdivision, or should it be the luau? And then we had. Requests, are they from the selectmen for our input on potential parcels the town is interested in procuring? And that's kind of hard for us to know if it's the right parcel when we're asked for input.
We're trying to put something in writing, the guidelines of what the town wants for open space versus on a case by case basis, for some kind of.
They're just hard to react to when they come at you.
Yeah, because it's, it's becoming a big issue in our department, a big issue.
I, I see Ruth is unmuted.
Yeah, I am muted, I just wanted to add that Len is on the implementation committee, so he. Has received that invitation and hopefully will be in attendance. And really, the goal is to follow through on some of the action items on the plan of conservation and development. Have that strategic plan so that all the commissions are coordinating on, you know, that joint effort or goal, so that. Some of that, you know, kind of moving without information can be alleviated. Really, we're looking to open up those lines of communication and figure out how we can operate efficiently.
All right, everybody's together, is, is there?
Well, I have everybody's together's, is, is there some sort of policy where we have to maintain this opens or continue to take this or maybe look at ways we can get rid of it as a town? Or we have to keep it, it's ours forever?
I mean, I think that the, and Ruth can probably speak to this too, but my thought is that the P O C D identifies, you know, the process and, and when the commission is looking at a subdivision, for example, we take, we're considering a fee in Lua versus that, rather than having these dribs and drabs of open space parcels here, there and everywhere. The commission may decide, well, we'd rather have the fee so we can put money aside to buy this one piece that is going to connect with what we have. And so we don't end up with having to run all over town maintaining properties that don't contribute to anything. I think that's the idea is trying to redefine so it's not so haphazard. I don't know if Ruth agrees with that or not.
I agree with that. It really is to get all the different commissions focused on their roles and working together. And that could certainly be an outcome.
And if I could just add to answer your question, you know, once we accept it as open space, it's open space. Very, very difficult to undo that. So that's why we need to really think about that in the future.
That would be Alan.
Who, who's being?
Alan Baker.
Alan Baker, three forty-nine street.
I know.
Can I just offer you something? Information. I think that you're all talking different definitions of open space. And so that when you get to that committee meeting, what is open space to conservation and agricultural is different than what is open space to you and what is open space to you.
Right.
So I think, you know, you're going to be surprised when we have that conversation.
I suppose I'm talking about the property that we'll just say goes down to the Scannick River by Bright Street over on the, at the, by Saxton. It is a sheer cliff and it's ours to maintain. And all the trees are falling into the people's backyards and we have no access to even get to this without going through somebody's yard. There's no easements or easements have been taken over. That's what I'm talking about. I mean, we have little bits and corners of land that are like so undeveloped, so not used for any agricultural purpose or anything, but they need to be maintained and they're not. And that's where we're having issues.
Do you have a list of all these properties?
So I can, I can give you a list of properties I'm having problems with, but we.
Maybe you've been reached out for the meeting to have a list of where all these open space properties are. Yeah, we have, we have, I'm just looking at the P O C D. As of the last P O C D, there was total land, so that's town, state, you know, state development rights, so private conservation easements, everything, sixteen thousand nine hundred acres total, which is twelve percent. The town as of then was responsible for just over seven hundred. But there is in the P O C D, an open space map which identifies them, and I think it's on the G I S. But we can provide this to you for the September meeting. The, the process that Anne talked about is the eight-two-four referral, which comes to the board of selectmen. That hasn't been on the books forever. So the town could acquire land and didn't have to come here. Now they have to go to you. You can say, we don't think it's appropriate for you to obtain this land. And it would then trigger a super majority vote of that board to then go forward. And so there's more of a checks and balances than there has been. I don't know if that helps, but just so that people know.
Well, I suppose it doesn't, if the town understands what they're getting into, you know, and, and the town understands that there is some, there'll be maintenance or whatever, I mean, whatever has to be done. And then they know it and then it can be budgeted for and then it can be, you know, ultimately funded. The problem we're having now is it's not funded and there's, it, it's just migrating or.
No, they're probably, she has the past too, that no one thought of it long ago.
There's two different kinds of open space. We have like, as you're saying, so there's one, the one we plan for. We try to get money, you know, saved for, that's actually preserving woodland or farmland. The other one is where the commission has accepted open space in various developments over the years. And we have those little pieces here, there and everywhere. That's the part we've got to deal with.
Right, correct.
That's, one of the goals might be that we, that comes out of this is that you guys may encourage that we go and look at conservation easements in lieu of actually obtaining the property. So we'll, we want a conservation easement in favor of this use or this or that, but the ownership is retained. So we don't actually take but it's preserved in perpetuity. There's, I mean, you can do that as well and that would make it so the town doesn't ever.
But the, the other, the other issue that we stand to have with conservation easements is then they feel, well, the people who end up with these confirmation easements feel that, well, you won't let me do anything, so you have to maintain it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I suppose that's sort of a buyer beware situation.
Right.
You know, there's things that you can do. I know there's some towns that require them to be pinned and, you know, get a tree or something so that we, everybody knows that it's there. But there's, Will, I'll make sure that we get this to you so you can see the map portion, the open space portion of the P O C D prior to that meeting. So you, it'll show you what we have.
Well, since I think, it knows we're all looking at it from a different lens, it probably would be really helpful if when Ruth puts it off, she makes it clear all the different lenses and what we need to focus on.
It seems to me that we have to have some basic definition of terms, like open space to Joe or to you or to me are all different. So we have to have some basic terms to start with. We're all, we're all coming from the same, you know, the same place. And that's, that's the benefit of having a group together.
Okay, do we have anything else under correspondence? Okay, then we're moving on to our business meeting. And there's a topic here, farm worker housing, Resinport Avenue. In formal discussion. And again, this isn't a public hearing. It is just something that the town planner I think is going to update us on.
So I think, is there somebody here? Yeah, okay. So I'm, you want me to, I'm gonna plug the flash drive in so I can share.
I made more, I made copies of other things besides the eight and a half, eleven by seventeen. Just, this way.
We didn't get a, we didn't, I didn't have it when the flash went out. Got it. Okay.
Enough for you to.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Oh, was there somebody?
No.
I kind of. Okay. Another, the eleven by seventeen copy that went to the office, are those still? Oh, it's on here.
Yeah, I have this, I.
Right, right.
The packet went out.
Okay.
But I have these two things because we're.
That's the one I kind of wanted to show.
Because we're running those too, I just want to share it.
Yes.
So I'm just sharing this stuff. I'll try to follow you along as you.
Okay, thank you.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, my name is Christian. I'm an engineer. And I'm working for the Go Six who own this property right now. This property is eight tobacco sheds at the moment. And those are noted by the, by the lighter gray structures. The new structure that we wanted to put in for up to forty migrant workers would be the darker gray structure there. And it shows distances to different property lines. The other plans I passed out actually show all those barns, but not the, not the migrant worker camp. The other two portions of that are septic system because it was part of, I'm kind of in the process of doing the septic system design. And I don't see any problem with that. It's got to go through more central. It's got to go through the state health department. But it's a, basically it's, the soils are, are appropriate there for supporting such a large system. And I don't know if anybody is, so I happen to be probably a great engineer to do for this project, to have for this project. My family owns a tobacco farm and we have a migrant worker camp too. And so I, I know it immediately. I, and it's located right near the, my brother's house and my uncle's house before him. And for the most part, the migrant workers come, you know, early March, maybe into, into April. And by November, December, they're, they're on their way back to where they came from. The ones that we have are Jamaicans and I think maybe the ones you can have are Jamaican. They put in ten, twelve hour days and, and they come in a bus, they leave in a bus. There's never a lot of cars going back and forth because they're not, they don't drive individually anyplace. If one goes twenty though. So that's the way we run it. I assume that's maybe the way you run it. And there are other places that we had migrant workers, but it's certainly more cost effective to have them under your own camp. Then you don't have to pay for their rent and, and upkeep the boards to somebody else. You can, you could have them under your own property. So this spot was kind of chosen, I think. It is a spot they own. It is far away from the road. It's kind of tucked in back. It's tucked between the tobacco barns there. And get tucked between the, the two on the bottom there. If you look at that other sheet, that one. It's tucked between those last two on the bottom. And the reservoir road is, is on the top of that sheet. And looks like, you know, there's a few houses in the front, on the front edge there, but this is quite a ways from those properties. So I, I don't know, did you have anything to add, Andre?
No, just want to be able to hold their workers up or on the tobacco farm. That's how it's been done for years. We just want to continue our farming operation.
Also, long term, this is by far the most cost effective way we can do it.
I have some question.
Yeah.
May I just, I've got to you guys, could I have a couple of identifications, please?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
To.
Andre Grozak?
Thank you.
I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you.
I'm the cell last name.
Yeah, it's G R O W C Z K?
G R O S Z Y K. Just like it sounds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
The other.
Dana Grozak?
I have, thank you, question. Yeah, I, I can remember back sixty years ago, my dad was a tobacco farmer. How do you, how do you teach Jamaicans?
This is an official government H two A program.
Yeah.
So we follow all the rules of the government tells us we need to follow, they tell how much they need to get paid. Basically, we have a contract with them. We would specify that they would come, say for planting, May fifteenth. And then we would keep them through, say harvest like now and then through stripping into the fall and then they would go home in October, November or whenever we're finished.
Do they have a agreement where they have to spend, send so much money back to Jamaica?
There is no agreement. The, it's, their money is their money. I have no control over it. All I, I'm just controlled by the government. They tell me how much I need to pay them.
And what responsibility do you have for their actions?
What responsibility of, of, they are fully insured. We have workman's comp policy. A lot of the health issues, the community health service comes and helps them out. Bring the dentist over because their medical facilities in their countries are kind of limited. So that, that's what basically happens. You know, if somebody gets hurt, that's my responsibility. I take them to the hospital. If they're sick, we try to make arrangements for them. It's just like any other person, you know.
Well, the federal government too sets up how big the structure has to be. How much square meters they need as common space, how much square meters they need, you know, per person for sleeping arrangements. And they kind of set all that up too. So.
It's not up to me to put, you know, a hundred guys in ten by ten space. We're told how much space they need and.
How long have you been doing this?
Well, since I was in high school. And then I started on my own, nineteen ninety-five.
Have you had any incidents where the police have been involved?
No, the only, the only incidents that we would have is last year during COVID times. You know, we had the press and this and that, but that's, that's about it. They generally don't drink. They're very religious people. They're fire people that come.
In turn, they're driving tobacco riggers. Do they have licenses?
You're not required to have a license to drive a tractor. But as they drive the bus or van, they do have licenses, yeah.
So a lot of them, a lot of them have their own licenses for Jamaica, but they actually get a license for here and they're kind of proud to bring it in. And maintain that ability in, in United States too, the ones that I know.
So it hasn't changed much in the last fifty years.
The only thing that has changed is the, the riggers were pulled by horses. Now we're pulling with trucks. Everything else is the same.
Well, I, I do remember that they're part of the contract or the stipulation from Jamaica was they had to send so much money back to their fam.
Not anymore, not anymore. You're not required to pay taxes. They have to file taxes, give them W twos at the end of the year. And they file taxes just like any other person. But they, they will never collect social security. They'll never collect unemployment. They just have to pay federal tax.
I had a question. So like, it sounds like they're describing that there's a federal guideline on farm housing. And how does that differentiate from multifamily housing?
They're not establishing residency here. So this is a separate use in our regs as a special use permit. And it's specifically called field workers' housing. So this is not, this is, they're not asking for a change of zone. They're not asking for approval to build a multifamily development, which means.
And I was specifically looking at, so we actually have something that, that defines field worker housing?
It's three oh five point seven B one. It's on page twenty-one, three oh five seven B. So that means, and we're ways away from this, if they leave here and they, they proceed forward, they would come in, it requires a special use permit. So that's a butters notices, a public hearing. If it ultimately is established, they can't use the, they cannot use the building to have people there, you know, on the off season type thing. It's not a short term rental or a lodge or it's for field workers' housing. It's for people related to the agricultural activity on the property. So this is not something that could morph. If they in two years decide they don't need the labor, they can't then just turn it into an apartment building. That is.
Does it have to occur in agricultural zone or can it occur by special use permit anywhere in town?
I think that it.
Because when I was looking at the.
Yeah, the farmer.
An applicant choosing to pursue this would have to demonstrate all the things in, for finding for a special permit. In seven oh one.
Correct.
So they would have to demonstrate harmony with the area where they want to do it. So although they could do it. where they want to do it. So although they could do it anywhere in town, they'd have to show it's.
They still have to.
Harmony with the neighborhood.
You still have to be convinced that, that it's appropriate in size, scale, location, their operation, how they're going to conduct the facility. That all goes into whether or not you feel in this particular circumstance on this property, given this size and scale, or if it's appropriate. So that all still isn't quite.
And that's currently zoned A one or A two property, I can tell you.
What's the official address? I think it's one sixteen Resinore.
Yeah.
One zero six.
One oh six.
I think it's just unfortunate. When I was a kid, all the high school kids used to work.
That'd be mine.
Now they don't work.
We haven't, we haven't seen.
And that's why our whole agricultural area of school.
It's not even agricultural. You know, the agricultural zones are. So the ag zones tend to run through most of the center, you know, on Scenic Road, Wells Road. And then in the sort of northeast and southeast corner.
Well, then I'm kind of confused then because if you're stating the, the section that's under other related uses, under agricultural related uses, wouldn't that only apply to agricultural zones?
I don't believe so because of the way that the right to farm stuff is written. It's an, if it's a bona fide operation, I think it's applicable across, but that, those are the things that will confirm if they submit an application. I, I really haven't had much to do with this. It was something Clark had worked on, so I'm, I'm not super familiar with all the details, but we would verify all of those things when the application was received.
And if also, if I could, I'd like to see what the federal requirements are for farm housing as far as square footage and building and all the physical standards.
Yes, okay. So if you ultimately elect to submit an application, can you provide that as part of?
Yeah, okay. They not show it's a hundred square foot permit.
Yeah, we, we know the regular. Yeah, so just if you could submit that regulation as part of your application and you decide to move forward.
Yeah.
If I recall, when I was a kid, I didn't have a choice. I had to work.
Tobacco?
No, I actually worked in the garage. With my father on it.
Is there anything else at this point, since there's no application before us?
Yeah, no, we just wanted to, we just wanted to tell, you know, the commission what we're planning and just so there was no surprises down the road and, and just get everybody understanding what it was going to be, you know, we know there was there's people that, and I think they're here, but just are uncomfortable with it. So we just wanted to make sure that there's questions, you can kind of know what's going on too.
Well, I think the question raised tonight is this farm regulation three oh five, if it applies town wide or just in areas on actual.
So the, so farms are permitted use in all zones per the residential and agricultural use table in four oh two.
Right, but this almost sounds like an accessory use to me.
I'll verify that. I, I expect, I don't know if you went over that with Clark, but we'll, we'll obviously make sure that.
Can I just add? In reviewing the regs initially, so the right to farm regs would allow the commercial farm in a, in a residential zone. And then when you look at other uses, you get the farm worker housing that requires a special use permit. So that was kind of the path.
For the public who's here. This was part of our business meeting, so we were aware that there's potentially an application coming. Assuming we receive an application, then there would be a public hearing. And the applicant would present and the public would have full opportunity to comment at that time. Do we have anything else under our business meeting? Nothing for executive session? Then I think a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion when you adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, the meeting is adjourned at seven point five.